Good evening, good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We recall the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown has the meeting improperly advertised.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. It's good to see everyone. Good to see those even out Facebook live stream. In fact, Commissioner, let me tell you what I'm thinking about. Some of them said, tell us to keep our mics on because they want to hear everything that we say. So please keep your microphones on when you speak so the audience. I almost want to say our TV audience can hear. Our Facebook audience can hear. All right. I'm not sure if anyone here from the Ministerial Alliance today to do our invocation. Doesn't appear to be that way. Then we will default once again to in-house. We ask Mr. Joe Mosley to lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Please stand now for invocation and our pledge.
Let us pray. Most kind and benevolent Father, we thank you for your bountiful blessings. We thank you for all that you do for us on a daily basis. We now pause, Father, and ask for your divine guidance and insight and foresight that this body deliberate on business for Liberty County. Pray with you, be with them and strengthen them. And Father, we pause to pray for those who are going through the COVID crisis. We pray that you'll be with them and strengthen them in this hour. As we thank you for in the precious pointed and powerful name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Mr. Mosley. At this time, with our agenda, Commissioners, with your approval, I'm not sure, Joe, we need to do it by vote or just by consensus. We need to, item 9A from our attorney, we need to give him a little more time. So we need to have him, we need to move A to follow item F. Does that take official action, Mr. Brown, so we can, you know, think so? Is that all right, Commissioners? If we move item A to follow item F?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Give a, now Commissioner Fraser, is he online or he's going to be online? He said he was going to call in. Okay, he's going to call in. All right. Good to have other Commissioners here today. Thank you for your dedication to service of Liberty County. All right, our minutes for January. Take this off before I get in trouble. We require our approval. Maria sent them out to us.
Second.
Meetings for January 4th and 20th are here. The motion is that they be accepted as presented. And there's a second. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor worship, let be known by raising your right hand, please. Minnesota approved for January 4th and 22nd. Thank you. Proclamation for Arbor Day, Ms. Karen Bell is here, you know. Karen comes to visit us quite often. There's always a party going on, but keep Liberty beautiful. When she makes the good, she brings trinkets.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is my wonderful grandson Bryce. He's going to be showing, helping me out, helping me out today. Turn this way. Maybe not. So we're here to celebrate Arbor Day. Arbor Day is a planters holiday for trees. It's a national and international celebration that observe, observing, that encourage tree planting and care. Arbor Day is organized and celebrated by organizations, companies, schools, and entire communities like Liberty County. We want to encourage everyone to plant a tree if you have the space. Right now Arbor Day for our area is February the 18th, which is a Friday. Our reservations have gone live today. And I tell you that our SVPs for trees are off the chart, which is great. If there is a location in your district that you have for red northern oak trees or dogwoods, we do have some extras that we can give out to your area. So any Commissioner that have an area that has the space for some trees, please let us know and we will provide them for you. But the local community can go online on our Facebook page or our website or the newsletter that went out and reserved a tree. We have four locations this year. On the 18th of February, it would be at the Farmer's Natural Food Location on 196. And we're going to be a part of the re-grand opening of Melon Bluff on Isles Highway. So I'm very excited about that, for that place to open back up, to give our community something else to do. So that's on February the 18th. And then on the 19th, at our recycling fair, we will be at the Waltive City Hall where the shred machine or shred truck would be. And then at the Liberty County Community Complex in Midway. And that would be from nine to one. On Friday is nine to 12 at the Farmer's Natural Food Location. And then at the Melon Bluff Nature Center is from one to three. And that's all I have on Arbor Day, sir.
Mr. Brown, if you will.
Right as he was drinking, sorry.
This is proclamation for National Arbor Day in Liberty County. Whereas in 1872, the branch of old agriculture set a day by five complaining trees. And whereas this commemoration called Arbor Day was first observed, the planting of more than eight trees in the brown stuff. And whereas Arbor Day is now served throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for fires, and capital for living bodies. And whereas trees in our country increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees where they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim February 18, 2022, as National Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to celebrate and support efforts to protect our trees and movements. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to cheer the heart and promote the well-being of distant and future generations. That is in every verse of 22.
And Ms. Brown and Ms. Bell, if you will, let's go ahead and do the next one, Paint Liberty Purple, and we'll have one signing ceremony.
As he transitioned to our purple. All right, so on February the, I'm sorry. February the 10th is another birthday. And that's part of Relay for Life. American Cancer Society is the sponsor of another birthday. We're trying, they do research so every cancer survivor can have another birthday and another birthday and another birthday. And here in Liberty County, we celebrate that by having another birthday party. So on February the 10th, because of COVID, we will be going Zooming parties. So we're having a Zoom party. And we're hoping that you will join us. It will be from six to seven. And we're also asking every citizen in Liberty County to wear purple or to display purple ribbons on your buildings, on your businesses, on your home, or on you. Just wear purple on that day. And purple symbolize all cancers. Someone asked me that, so I thought I'd mention that today. The reason why the American Cancer Society Relay for Life use purple as their symbol because it represents all cancer. And that's what we're trying to do research for, is for all cancers. So we hope you can be with us again on February the 10th. It's Zoom. You can go on our Facebook page or our website. You have to register. If you register, you can be in the running for some wonderful prizes. We are hoping to have great raffles throughout the presentation. And if any Commissioner would like to send in their picture with a small little statement of why you believe cancer research is important to you or a two-minute, two-minute video, we will definitely show it through our Zoom Experience Party at Standards Gander. So we really hope that you will participate.
Thank you, sir.
This is American Cancer Society Relay for Life proclamation for Liberty County Georgia. Whereas the American Cancer Society Relay for Life movement is going to inform the people at Relay for Life events worldwide to show their determination and commitment to help free the world of the pain and suffering of cancer. And whereas the Relay for Life of Liberty County is community-based and driven by volunteers who work together to bring the people and build the fund to fund the mission of the American Cancer Society. Whereas cancer continues to touch the lives of so many. In 2022, more than 1.6 million people.
Will be newly diagnosed with cancer in the U.S. And whereas thanks to funds raised through the Relay for Life Movement, the American Cancer Society is able to invest in cancer research, provide free information and support for people facing the disease today, and educate people about how to reduce their risk for cancer or detect it early when it's easiest to treat, contributing to a 23% decline in cancer death rates since 1991. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of Liberty County, Georgia, to hereby proclaim February 10th, 2022, as Paint Liberty Purple for Relay for Life. On this day, citizens of Liberty County are asked to wear purple and display purple ribbons as we honor, remember, and celebrate cancer survivors.
Thank you. And this year's relay will be on May 13th. It's a Friday. We are hoping for it in person, but if not, it'll be virtually and a drive-through. But we will have it.
All right. If you and your helper will come. We'll transition from trees to purple. Commissioners, will you fill in, please? Chairman, I want to give you the governor's. Hey, I'm a tree lover, man. I'll do it. Kind of partial to live oak, so.
Just slip that purple thing over his head.
He's done both of them?
No, that's for, we're going to do two pictures, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, my goodness. Stop, put it down.
Put it down.
Yes.
I thought you were through.
Now the purple.
And in your bags, you have information about. We have information about Arbor Day and you have a changeable cup for Relay for Life. Now put your purple. Not on me.
All right. Chicken feet.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, thank you, Ms., Dr. Bell, for what you do and your helper. Keep grooming, keep grooming. My intention that the board appointments did not make this agenda, the committee, are you all prepared to do that?
Yes.
All right, sir. Then let's make that, if we will. Item G. So let's go ahead and do that officially. A motion to make the board appointments, item G.
I move, Mr. Chairman.
And then, Mr. Brown, item H will be your report.
So move to make the board appointment.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, there's some guests that we have in the building that I didn't forget. So we let Mr. Brown introduce those persons. Some have been with us and are being promoted, some have not got to steal.
Both of these guys are severely wet. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my honor and pleasure to bring before you a couple of new department heads that we've got. First, Mr. David O'Hagan, who came in. He's the building superintendent. Now he took Mr. Johnson's place. He was previously working as Mr. Johnson's assistant. We actually stole him. We'll tell Ricky, but Ricky knows. We stole him from the Recreation Department down there sometime back. And he's doing an excellent job for us. And so we're glad to have David in the new role. He is very, very good already at what he does. Since we stole him from Recreation Department, as you know, we had somebody retire. So we needed to fill some pretty big shoes, which I think.
He's got size.
I haven't asked what size he wears. But you know this guy, Mr. Raymond Gross. So we're honored to have Mr. Gross come on as the new Recreation Director for Liberty County. He has jumped in. We started out with both of these guys, especially on the recreation side. We started out making lists of stuff to not create these guys on. When we got to a page and a half, I told Joe, I said, we better, we better hold off. And we ran through that quickly with Mr. Gross last week, one day. And I said, you ready for the test now? And he said, I'll come back. So he's had a lot of challenges. But we give these guys a chance, Mr. Chairman, just to say hello if you want to. But we're honored to have them.
Please, gentlemen, say hello to us.
Hello, Commissioner. I want to thank you all for the opportunity that y'all have provided me. It offers me an opportunity to give back to the community that helped me and shaped me into who I am today. And I look forward to doing big things for the people of Liberty County and through the Recreation Department. So I appreciate this opportunity and I'm going to make you proud.
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Hagan?
Hey, I'm David. Nice to meet everybody. Yeah, I'm, I'm in a few words.
Good to have you aboard. Good to hear good things about both of you. Early on, if you can be assistants, you please let us know. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. You're welcome to stay or you can be excused. All righty. Finance report.
Hey, everybody should have your December report. Things are looking good. At the end of December, we had collected about 27% of our total budgeted revenues. And we had exhausted about 47% of our budgeted expenditures. So we're right on target with spending. And of course, January, you'll see a larger influx, January and February, of revenues because that's when most of the taxes will come to us. At the end of December, you had approximately 2.9 months' worth of operational expenditures in your undesignated unreserved fund balance. One year ago this time, you were at 2.8 months. So right on track, looking good. A couple departments running slightly ahead of schedule. We've talked about a couple of them in the past, but I'll just hit those again as I go through the list. Finance is running a little ahead of schedule. We had to pay for our annual audit that did get issued in December. So that kind of skewed our budget for the month. We will come back in line. Risk management took a large hit. We did send in a lump sum payment for our defined benefit plan, our retirement plan. So that's going to, that budget was already skewed for the umbrella insurance, the liability insurance that we have to pay for upfront in the year. But now it's really skewed because of that payment made in December. That will continue to run in the deficit for the remainder of the year. I don't expect it to exceed its budget, but because of those lump sum payments, it will remain in the red for the remainder of the year. Your general admin dues, as I said, we paid that upfront. So there won't be anything else charged to that. Superior Court, as I mentioned before in past meetings, we've paid for the law clerk upfront. So that's going to run slightly ahead of schedule. And the clerk's office, they had to purchase some, let's see, postage and printing and binding for their court case files, a significant amount. So that kind of threw their budget in the deficit. And I do expect that to come back in line next month. Bureau of Standards, they had purchased, made significant purchases in the month of December for body cams, the Bluetooth integrations, the annual software maintenance. So those items right there were significant purchases to that department. That's also the department that is capturing the cost of the new building that they're in. So we're going to continue to monitor that department. They haven't exhausted their budget, but they are starting to run slightly ahead of schedule. Not much. They're at 50.6%, so just, just a little bit. And the debt service, that's actually where we're capturing all of the charges for the new enterprise lease agreement. And so that, we did not originally budget that in the way that it's coming in. So that might run in a deficit for the year, but we'll continue to monitor that as well. When you go to solid waste, so it's a modest net loss at the moment. Until we get those solid waste assessments that trickle in in January and February, you'll probably see that net loss. Not much, a little over 200,000. But in total, they've only spent about 45% of their budget. So they're still within their spending parameters. Your, all the departments within solid waste are within their budget as well. All of your special revenue funds, running right on schedule or below budget. Sales tax is continuing to do phenomenal. At the end of December, we're actually $3.4 million ahead of schedule. We're collecting the $54 million. So that's great.
That's better than great.
That's just great. I do have all of the second page of your SPOLOX report. I did list out all of those obligations that we kind of threw out last, last meeting. And so if you will, just make sure that I have everything that you obligated for yourself and your road monies. And if you have any questions or concerns, please let me know so I can amend this. T-SPOLOX is doing the same, truly, running ahead of schedule as well. And at the end of December, we're actually about $37,000 ahead of schedule. And we didn't, we did not expect to be at this point, at this time. So we're doing very well. That's all I have unless somebody has something specific.
Got a question for Mr. Brown. On the enterprise lease, could you get a list of how many departments are receiving vehicles?
Yes, sir, be glad to. We'd be glad to give you a master list of who's really, who's scheduled to get them. Really, the only departments that have gotten them have been about three apartments because they're just slow to come in, you know, can't get them off. But be glad to give you the master lease. In fact, got a meeting this week to look at the master lease schedule for next year, which will include a lot from this year too. But be happy to, yes, sir.
Okay.
Other note there is that, you know, Kim and I will get together. There's money budgeted in SPOLOX 6 for patrol vehicles. So we'll probably do some kind of transfer from SPOLOX 6 over to the Enterprise Trust in order to help that out. That is how someone else is going to be covering.
So actually, what are we looking at? About 75% replacement from enterprise?
Oh, you look at 100% replacement over a course of about three years.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Three years.
If the vehicles, if we can get.
Well, that's the problem. They're just, they're not able to get them in. They've ordered them and there's just a backlog. It's.
Yeah, in fact, get too much off on this, but like vans and some cars. Ford, there's nobody that's got the order banks open right now. You can't even place an order for a Ford product, whether it's a truck or a car or a van right now. They just closed the portal. So we're searching. Enterprise is helping. It's good to have them, such a large buyer, that they get preference over, you know, with the buying power. So, yes, sir. Be glad to give you that.
Didn't see that coming.
I don't think anybody did.
I want to make one mention. I've been, I love you guys watching news like I do. I'm going to say, a neighboring county is really struggling with their T-SPOLOX. I say, thank God for Liberty County. When we sat down with the municipalities, it was fairly smooth, very smooth.
I thought it was too.
I said, thank God for Liberty County. We, we know how to do it right. And it's paying off.
It is, it really is.
We look forward to using it otherwise, sir. Any questions for Mr. Bell?
I can pay off enough just to get Bill Carter Road later.
All right, thank you, Ms. McGough.
Thank you.
Res zoning petition? Mr. Rickenson?
Good evening, Chairman Lovett, members of the commission.
Good evening, sir.
First item that I had tonight is an old item that you all tabled at your January meeting and I'm asking to bring it back tonight. You'll recall, this is a request from Mr. Joseph Bratton.
Excuse me, Ms. Rickenson.
A two-thirds of an acre.
If you will, sir. Mr. Brown, since this is a review of this, we need to go into public session again?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know there's a legal requirement, but it'd probably be good to. I don't think it would hurt.
All right.
It's certainly up to the board.
Share, obtain a motion, then we go into public hearing.
I'll move.
Second.
Second, all in favor. Okay, all right. I'm sorry, Mr. Rickenson.
Okay. This is a two-thirds of an acre piece of property that's located in a rural residential section of Bill Carter Road. Mr. Bratton wants to rezone this property from AR1 to B2 so that he can operate a storage yard associated with his mobile mechanic business. As you can see, we, we got the, we dispensed to the public hearing, the required public hearing at the last meeting, but it was, it was held at your last meeting. So that's been taken care of. Just to kind of refresh your memory a little bit, this is how Mr. Bratton has been using the property, just using it to part the vehicles associated with his mobile mechanic business there. You can see kind of the general look at it from the surrounding area. His narrative, he wants to store a couple of box trucks and some trailers and some equipment, some heavy equipment that are used with his mobile mechanic business. And y'all heard all about that the last time. Part of his justification for wanting to do it in this spot is he's got family living on both sides of the property and he'd like for them to keep an eye out on his expensive tools. And this is just to refresh your memory, this is where it's located. Bill Carter Road, Ogletor Highway here, Bill Carter, Bill Carter, the Carter Store here, and then Bill Carter Road go down about half a mile. And it's down on the right-hand side of the road. And that's just a little bit bigger view of it. You can see the nearest commercial is over at the intersection of Bill Carter Road and 84. Everything in the immediate vicinity is AR1, which is rural residential. Not going to go through the zoning analysis unless you want me to go through it.
No, sir.
But the Planning Commission voted on this matter in December at their, at their regular meeting, and they recommend disapproval. So I would be glad to answer any questions that you have about this tonight.
I'm not sure our questions will be of you at the last meeting because we heard this thoroughly and we discussed it thoroughly. And the, by majority vote, this commission asked the parties to perhaps sit down and have some conversation and review this proposal and come back to this commission with the results of that discussion. I'm not sure that has happened, but I will. Ms. Mosley, I see you here. Good to have you back again. And the other parties here. Okay, everybody's back, everybody's back. With addition of some other people now. So I guess from this commission, so we don't totally, we don't need to rehash everything we already heard. But I guess, Ms. Mosley, if you don't mind coming to the podium for me, if you don't mind. Now, general, those in the audience, what we don't do, we don't allow a, an array of people to all come say the same thing. So, Ms. Mosley, if there's someone else that you want to come and stand with you, I'm open to that. And then we'll also allow the Brattons to have that same opportunity. If someone here you want to come and stand with you, or you're going to be the representative at this point.
Would anybody in the audience want to come and stand?
That's across the street. He's across the street. He wasn't here the last time.
Here's the ground with Ms. Mosley, the spokesman.
Oh, I'm still the spokesman?
Yes, ma'am.
But you can yield it to.
Or you can yield.
Yeah, you can yield it to someone else.
But what has been the change since, or since our last conversation, since our last meeting, Ms. Mosley? Has there been anything? Do you all have an opportunity to have any kind of discussion?
No, we haven't had any conversation.
Okay.
We still feel the same, and I yield to Mark Mosley.
Okay.
How are y'all doing?
Good, sir.
Well, I'm pretty sure from the last meeting, you heard what my mother stated as far as even the recommendation, I was there for that. I wasn't able to make the last one. I apologize. But just the concerns and feelings of the people in the community, that's the main concern, you know. It's just, and I've talked to her about it and others about it. And it's not, it's not anything malicious intended of anyone not wanting anybody to have anything. It's, there's nothing like that. It's just the feeling of the community of what it looks like and how they feel about that situation. And I know we leave it into the Commissioner's hands, and I know you guys will, you know, make the decision based on that. But you do have a community of folks that are very, very concerned about that.
Concerned to the point, be very clear for me, concerned to the point of being, yeah, or no.
Yeah, yeah, being, they're, they're, they're very against it. They are, they are against having that. against having that in their community.
Okay, thank you all.
Yes.
Now, we allow the Bratums, if you all want to, you don't have to, but if you want to come in. This is your request.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask a question.
Hey, Jeff, I'm sorry.
You always make a comment about adjacent landowners, so y'all, y'all live adjacent to this piece of property. Everybody there lives across the road from it and, or down the...
Yes.
Okay.
Across the street, directly in front of it. I am adjacent to it.
Thank you, good point, Commissioner.
All right, I'm there, Joseph Bratum, third. I didn't hear what he said, but the older man, they do not stay across the street. I see him come there, leave, but everybody that's here does not live on his road. I'm just trying, I'm just bobbing about what's the problem. You don't come out your house and see this. I had a petition paper that I went up, up and down the road, I had some young lady do it for me, everybody had no problem with it. I just don't understand what's the problem. I'm, I don't, I'm just lost for words right now.
Yes, it's not, no, Mr. Fleming doesn't live across the street, that's his mother's residence, yes, we do know that, that's, if he's the oldest, that's his property, his mother is in Atlanta with his granddaughter, with his daughter. We're just, that's all we're trying to figure out is what's the problem, what's the big issue, because there's no work, we're just trying to have a place to park our mobile vehicles. And then, so nine-to-five job, there's no working going on out there. If he is out there, he's cleaning the yard, and there's just two box trucks, a truck that we're transferring to, another Bratms' commercial truck, and a trailer that holds the equipment for the work. And what I'm not getting answers for is what is it hurting? What is the commu, what is it hurting that was being seen out there?
That's what I'm here.
That's all I'm asking, right? Yeah.
I think you need to talk to the chairman.
The point of the last meeting was for you all to leave here and have that conversation, not have it here tonight.
We're not trying to have it here tonight, nobody made communications to try to get in contact with us.
Neither, did you make, did you try to reach out?
I called my cousin, I talked to Mr. Mars the last minute, I said, do you want to set up a meeting? Can you get in contact with her, because I don't have her information? And I text you.
You text me? I did not receive it.
I do have it.
Well, I'm glad that you do, but I did not receive it, and I, excuse me, ma'am, I'm talking to the chairman.
All I can say is...
And I thought back to the chairman.
It's like, nobody don't want to talk to you.
In our fairness, we gave you 30 days.
Yeah.
We gave you 30 whole days to try to, we can't do that now on this floor, on this floor, all right?
Mr. Chairman, question Mr. Bratum, how are you, sir? You mentioned that you had a petition that folks were signed, do you have?
Yeah, I got a copy.
Give a copy of the petition.
I had a copy, and Mr. Brown, I know you're not a lawyer, but what do you consider to be a valid petition?
What the board has generally looked at in the past would be actual owners of property that are adjacent to that facility, not necessarily live there, but owners of property for a petition, not people that come there, not people that don't live in close proximity to whatever the issue is going on.
Okay, I don't have that petition, Mr. Chairman, with me, but I apologize, I may never check, I don't think I do. But there was some names that was on there that stays maybe a half a mile down the road from it. They're not property owners anyway, they're just John Doe names, if I must say so.
People in the community.
Because I did verify, and in one house, I think there were about three or four names that came out of one house, so that's why I'm asking the question, what is a valid petition? Is it for a property owner, or anybody that stays in a house in that area? I, I just need, you know, I'm not clear on that.
Commissioner Thriston?
Mr. Chairman, we may have discussed this at the last meeting, but I was, Mr. Rickenson, how, how many letters did you send out of adjacent property owners? That, that, within that footage, was it 200 foot, 250?
Everybody within a 200-foot radius of the boundary of this property got one.
And how many were that, do you know, all these folks?
I can't say exactly.
You don't remember?
Less than 10.
Less than 10? And I assume that Ms. Mosley got one? Did this gentleman, I was just wondering how many were here that actually got a letter?
He's across...
He is not very far, so...
And he is the...
Okay.
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 All right.
Okay. It's not as far as I think it is.
Yeah.
How about in, in regards to what Ms. Thriston said here, how many did you get back in opposition in your letters?
We didn't get any, I'm sorry, let me speak into the mic so folks at home can hear. We didn't get any, any petitions back. We did have the same people who are here tonight came to the Planning Commission meeting and spoke against it, and that's why the, part of the reason why the Planning Commission made a recommendation that it made.
Follow my team, Ms. Mosley.
When I received the petition, I called the planning office. The number that was on the petition, that person had just left the department, and they told me, the number that I called on the top of the letter, they were the ones who told me that the person at the bottom of the letter had left the department. So yes, I did contact the office. I told them at the time when I contacted them that I wanted to speak at the meeting, because that's what the petition said.
The letter said...
If you want to speak at the meeting, you must give notice. And I was told just to come to the planning meeting, and I did that. When I got there, of course, you signed in, so yes, I did contact the planning office.
You made contact and you went personally?
Yes.
Thank you. Answer your questions, sir.
Yes, and I was just, Mr. Bratum, in the pictures, there are some semi-trucks there, are they still there, did you get those moved?
No, they're not.
They're not, they're not going to be on the, on the property?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, got a question for Mr. Bratum. Your mobile operation, are you, how does the license come to you, is it from Liberty County or from the state?
Liberty. Liberty.
Okay, because I checked with Mr. Zechman office, and they said you do not have one.
Yeah.
I mean, I was just asking, you know, but they said you do not have one, but I did realize that you had a landscaping business.
Lawn service, yeah.
Lawn service business.
Yeah.
And a lawn service business and automotive business is two different.
Yeah, I got a license for both of them, both of them LLC.
Liberty County, Paul Zechman office say that you did not have one.
Right here in Hinesville, I go ready to...
Right, right.
Yeah, I go ready to the water company to get my license.
No.
City of Hinesville.
No, that's city of Hinesville.
City.
You actually need, Mr. Brown, am I correct, you need one for Liberty County?
Need one for Liberty too, okay, that's something new to me.
Yeah, I'd actually, it's, it's a learning experience.
Always went to Hinesville, you know?
Yeah, because you were, where you was at.
Yeah, I live, but still live in Hinesville.
Right, yeah.
My house is a home base, that's why I got licensed with Hinesville. Where I live right now is my own base business.
But they couldn't even pull up one for automotive service from there, but they pulled up the landscaping business.
But I got, I got both of them, right in Hinesville.
All right, could be on their behalf, that they made a mistake pulling it up.
All right.
Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
All right.
Chairman, I make a motion that we follow the recommendation of LCPC, so I'm disapprove.
This is a motion that we follow the recommendation of LCPC for disapproval of this request, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion, even though I thought we have discussed it, any further discussion?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. I think, Mr. Bratum, you have a business license in the city of Hinesville because your business is a home-based business.
Yes.
And the property on Bill Carter Road is where you want to store your...
Equipment, yeah.
Your, your equipment?
Yeah.
Okay, and I guess, Ms. Brown, does he, for storage of equipment, parking of vehicles, parking of trucks, there's not a business license requirement for that, is it?
Not if he's just going to park his stuff there, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, raising your right hand, please. Those opposed? Give me the count, please, sir.
It's 3-3.
3-3? We don't have...
So there'd be no action on it?
Okay. All right, let me help, this, this couple out, and the people in the audience, 3-3 tied, and I thought we had Commissioner Frazier on the line, but he's not on the line. Not sure which way he was going to vote, but I'm the line, all right. So it's 3-3 tied, so that means there's no action. But no action means no action. All right, so we have to bring it back.
What, in six months?
Actually, there's a waiting period.
Six months?
Is it?
Yes, sir. To come back, and in the meantime, there's no action, there's no action that should occur on the property.
Yes.
In that meantime.
Yeah, that means you guys aren't allowed to use it for that until such time as we can bring it back.
Oh, I got to move everything, right?
Well, I don't know if he has to move, he has to move, okay.
He would, yes, sir.
All right. I'm just bringing someone, can, if he did a home-based business of that property...
He wouldn't be able to store his equipment on it.
Wouldn't, okay.
That's, that's, that's why he can't store it, that, that's the problem also, probably that he has in the city. Yes, sir.
Well, yeah.
It would be, it would be the same in the county.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
I certainly could imagine you storing that in Hinesville.
No, that's why I move it.
But, and, and just so, go ahead, so, hold on. So the same concerns that would apply to the city of Hinesville apply also to the county? And you seem like a sincere person, that's what they're saying is, if, if, if you can't do that in Hinesville, why would you want to transfer that then to...
I just want to...
To the neighborhood, yeah, you're just trying to find a place.
I'm just trying to find a place.
You're trying to find a place, I understand, I understand.
That's all I'm trying to do.
Yeah, but you in a traditional neighborhood, has been there for, you know the story, your wife knows the story for a long, long time, so that's why these, these people are here. So right now, though, and I'm going to let you come in, six months, that give you some time to think about it, perhaps pursue some other avenues, you know, but it can certainly come back, and, and it may change by that time, the vote may change by that time. All right?
I got a question for Jeff, before, before you leave, stay right where you're at. If it was to be called a home-based business, you'd have to have some kind of structure there, or what? Jeff?
Yes, sir, just, just like with Mr. Bratum's house in Hinesville, he is only allowed to operate that as a home business because it's his house.
Mm-hmm.
He can operate inside that house as long as it's just an office and there's no exterior evidence of a business. That's, that's why, I think that's why you had to move your equipment from Hinesville, because...
Because I got a, I went to the lawyer, he didn't get that.
For your bu, for your, yeah, for your office. But, but Hinesville wouldn't let you park your vehicles in the yard, and, and you couldn't do that in the county either, as a home business, everything has to be done inside the house.
So same, same rules would apply, is what you're saying. Now, you, you did say one time you guys were planning on building a house there, I mean, I can't tell you what to do, man, that's you.
You know, like the story I told you when, basically, I went, we planned on putting a house there, but when I came down to the city to get an address, they told me that you got to be building a house there, or I got, you said I got, I said I got my equipment on the line. They told me that either I had to change it to commercial or residential.
It would, because, yeah.
So maybe with my equipment, I just went by the advice they gave me. So I went and applied for a return to commercial.
To get the rezone.
Yeah. This is the reason why the sign is out there.
I think, I think, and Jeff helped me out with this, I think even if it's rezoned, and no matter what, if he's going to operate a business there, whether it's commercial or whatever, he's going to have a str, he's going to have to have a structure in order to get an address. It's going to have to be a building of some type, other than just equipment, no matter, no matter what, you know what I'm saying? It, no matter what zoning is on it.
All right, you clear, sir? All right, anything else, this gentleman, this officer will help you. All right, Ms. Mosley and residents from the area, is everybody clear where we are? All right, thank you very much.
If you get it said, I got a place to put my equipment, I talked to somebody, but if you get a place, can I, is it around the residential so I could build a house there?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, sure you can, all right. Thank you, thank you all.
You ready for me to go into new business?
Let's come out of a public hearing, if we will, please.
Move it, Jeff.
I'm sorry to interrupt, you could go ahead and just stay there if you want to.
Stay there, all right, let's roll.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but it was... Sorry to interrupt.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the next request is a request by Mr. Josh Wheeler to rezone 142 acres of land from AR1 to, and A1, it's a combination of AR1 and A1, to R1 single-family, wants to build a single-family subdivision with approximately 150 lots on Leroy Cofer. He proposes to use county water, but he's, there's no sewer in the area, so each lot would have to have a septic tank, so this, there would be, each lot would have to have at least a half acre, and that's all contingent upon the Health Department approving the septic tank for the area. This is located, as I said, on Leroy Cofer Highway, parcel number is 120-037. We've advertised this property, and you can see the picture of the sign there as well. This is a map showing where the property is, just to kind of give you a little bit of reference, Leroy Cofer, Willie Dixon Road, Willie Dixon Road, this is the Saltra property here, this is the property where they used to park cars when we had deployments, so this is a 140-acre piece of timberland here that's being, that's recently been cleared. And this is a zoning map, as I said, this is on a combination of AR1 up on the frontage and then A1 back in the rear. That's just showing the flood, flood area, there is some flooding, some flood plain back on the back of the property, the, the A area there. This yellow area here is the area that's all uplands, it's out of the flood plain, so this would be where the subdivision would be built. And this is just a conceptual plan, a layout of the subdivision. Engineering will give you more detail on this, and also the Health Department will have a, have a say in this as far as the septic systems that they would approve. And just to, just to kind of show you the highway, the median there on Leroy Cofer, there's not one directly in front of the property here, but you can see there's a break here at Willie Dixon Road, so one of the, one of the entrances was here, and then there's another entrance over here on this side, there's a break here. So basically, when you're coming back from Savannah, you have to come here and make a U-turn and come into the property here, and when you're going, when you're here and you're going back to Hinesville, you got to go this way and get in the median and go back that way. Just wanted to highlight that that's kind of how this would operate because of the median. Zoning analysis, the property does have reasonable economic value as it's currently zoned, it does conform with the J-LUS plan, it's located in a mixed-use rural corridor which, of which single-family residential use is one of the prescribed uses, so it is, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We have not observed any, any adverse effects on nearby properties, the suitable, the proposed use is suitable in terms of the nearby uses. Will the zoning create an undue burden on traffic in the area? No, Leroy Cofer is a rural minor arterial with four lanes. This will not allow a short-term use, a short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals. It could possibly create a domino effect because if this one is successful, there might be other subdivisions that would come in the area. Are there any historical sites? We haven't noted any. Are there any historical sites? We haven't noted any. As I've already pointed out, this is partially in a flood zone A, and then we'll have to stay away from that. It's not spot zoning, and we haven't noted any other unique conditions. Planning Commission heard this at their, uh, at their meeting, um, in January, and they recommend approval with standard conditions. This has been advertised as a public hearing. I'd be glad to answer any questions for you as well.
District?
Did you have any opposition?
One.
We, yes, sir. We did, we did have one, one lady who came to the, to the Planning Commission and expressed some concerns of, uh... In fact, I can go back and show you exactly where she is. She lives in this house right there, at the corner of this, directly across from Willie Dixon Road, and she's expressed some concerns about the project. That's the only person who spoke at the, at the planning.
There she is, right there.
Who's that? Oh, now I know who that is.
Yeah.
Hold on a minute.
Excuse me. Is the, uh, total area of that property in District Four?
That I don't know.
District One.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Thought it was.
Yeah.
Chairman, I have a question.
Commissioner Stephen thinks he has. You think you have it?
Yeah, I got it.
My question, Jeff, now, you said, uh, the entrance to that property is, is where?
They're, they're proposing an entrance here and an entrance here. I can, I can show you their, their conceptual. There you go.
Okay, well...
That's, that's Willie Dixon there, and proposing two entrances on to Leroy Cofer.
And you said that, uh, let's say the 150...
Six?
156. And if, uh, exiting that subdivision, and if you wanted to come west to Heinzville, you have to go down and turn around and come back?
You have to go out this way, hit the median and come back, make a U-turn.
That's, that median, that, is that a raised median or just an open ditch, like?
I think it's a ditch in that spot.
A ditch in there. So, they would go down and then wrap around the median and then come back?
Come back up.
Is, um... Is there, how, how far is the, um... I know it's not on the map. How far down going east is, is a curve? Is, is there a curve? Is that past the cemetery?
No, uh-uh. Uh, actually, before you get to the cemetery, I think you would have already hit two more turnaround points.
Two more turnaround?
Yeah, you would, you already hit two turnaround points.
Oh, no, on...
There's one right there.
One right there.
Yeah, okay. And, and that is a curve there?
Yeah.
That's the curve.
I, I mean, to the, to the, to the west? I mean, fu, further down?
Going east.
I mean, to the east?
You're going east?
Going east.
That curve right, that curve right there is only by Arcadia.
By Arcadia, okay.
Bridge.
So, it's on this side of Arcadia?
Right, yeah.
Okay, and I guess, um, I was just concerned if, um, not that everybody that lives in there is gonna have to come to Heinzville at the same time. But if they, if they had to go that way to turn around, and then you got a curve right there with 18-wheelers barreling down the road, and at that point, from 84 there, they're right at about 60. And then you could have a, is there, um, a turning lane, you know, that they would get in to make that, that wraparound?
There is. If you go back to that slide with the star on it.
They all have the turning lanes, yeah.
I think it's, I don't know what it was, the star on that one.
Whatever you call it.
Here's a, Commissioner Gillis.
There it is, right there.
There is a turning lane at each of those turnaround points.
Yeah, but I, I was just saying, uh, a turning lane with, uh, majority of traffic, if it's coming to Heinzville, how, how, how deep is that lane and about how many cars would, could
Be able to line up?
To line up in there if they had to?
About three or four, probably.
Three or four?
Three or four.
Looks like a pretty good queue in here.
It's about 400 feet.
About 400 feet?
About four.
Okay.
How do you get that taken out? Is that your project work, or Trent, yours?
Yes.
How do you get that taken out and filled in, that median?
DOT.
To make, to make it a raised median?
No, I'm talking about to just put the pipe in it and, and, uh...
You wouldn't want to.
Mm-mm.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, you got, um, coming from, coming from Isaac Stevens Road, you'll have a decel lane for the people to go in the subdivision. All right, and then leaving out, you'd have to have a, a lane in the right-hand side for them to exhale out of the subdivision, going toward Arcadia, and then coming back.
Right, yeah.
Coming back, you'd have to have that to where they can, five or six cars could pile up on the left to come in there if they're going to the right. Of course, a lot of them will come out and go to Savannah, and there'll be some of them that'll come out and go into Heinzville, and that's what I was wondering if, um...
It is. Believe it or not, that's, that's really, I mean, that's how GDOT wants it, um, even though it's more, more movements coming in and going out. It is a safer, um, way of...
But the ones going to Savannah wouldn't, wouldn't have an issue.
No, uh-uh.
It's the ones that's got to loop around and come back.
Till they come back.
Yeah, till they come back, yeah.
They gotta turn around.
Yeah, turn around and come back up.
Okay.
They wouldn't move that down a little bit then, from Willie Dixon Road, to where those trucks could come out and just make a hard left, come out of that subdivision and make a left then?
I, I wouldn't think so. I, I have, uh, sent our site plan to the Georgia Department of Transportation to solicit input from them. But, you know, that, that road was designed to have those spaced out at a specific spacing. Now, things, things change. And if they're willing to do it, that's something we would explore.
I just know that when they come out of the, I guess it's Pope Rogers Road, at, at the land, at the
Transfer.
Transfer station, when they come out there, you know, they can come out and come back to Heinzville, but a lot of them's got to go all the way across. And then, then, you know, there's, their tractor, trailer's sitting between one lane on one side and one lane on another side, so...
Yes, sir.
Well, that's... Of course, I'm not saying that you would have anything in there like that.
Right. I, I do think in this instance, this is, this is the safer setup, rather than them crossing
Yeah.
Four lanes with, that traffic's moving in the mornings.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really moving. In fact, in fact, I think the one that spoke out when it was the opposition's term wasn't, wasn't necessarily in opposition to the project, it was more about the traffic and the speed on, on 196.
Well, I mean, that's, that's understandable there. I mean, but the DOT still had the final yes or no on it on that part?
Yes, sir.
I mean, the subdivision, I thought we had already looked at the subdivision before, and we talked about running water down there to it, or y'all were gonna dig
We did.
Water in and put the hydrants in, is that correct?
That's right, yes, sir.
We did.
Okay.
There was, there was some due diligence, and then the, the, um, timber company had the option to exercise their timber rights, which they have done, and that's kind of what delayed.
I got you.
Yeah, they, they were in there to...
That looks like a good project.
I think so. You know, it's, uh, got very little flood zone on it, very, very little wetlands, and it's got good access to a major highway there that, that doesn't disrupt existing neighborhoods.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Darlene Jefferson? How are you?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I am that lady. Where he pinpointed that, my house is, that is not my house. The one with the long trail is my house.
Right.
Right. Okay. Everything that y'all just said is the main problem. Since they have cut all the timber, I got wild hogs, dug up my drain field, I got all the deers in my yard. But I wanted him somehow to bring the DOT that the speed limit from 84, just before you get to my house where they used to park the car, is jump up to 55. The speed limit need to stay 45 after you, at least after you pass, um, Arcadia Drive. I'm one of the ones that, because of the four-lane highway, they towed out my house and I had to build further back. And like I had mentioned, uh, vehicle, two vehicles had ran into my old house. And I'm saying if a vehicle run into where I got my house now, somebody mean to do it. Lo and behold, someone just almost ran into the house. Hydroplane jumped the media and just happened to be lined up with that, that, that scratch that comes my driveway. And if he did not turn his wheel and end up into, I have a little ditch side of me, he would have ran into my house. It's, it's, it's the traffic, and since they four-lane the highway, my daughter has turned in coming home, somebody not paying attention, just knocked her right in the ditch and totaled her whole car. But it, it, the speed limit
Needs to be reduced.
Reduced, because once they, really, once they get on 84, I mean, on 196, there's no 45, they automatically gun into 55, and they're racing. So, I have to put my blinkers on at the, where they used to, um, park the cars and keep pumping my brakes and, and, and looking back. But the turn lane, 18-wheelers stops in that turn lane when they having trouble looking, so all those... When I'm coming from Savannah, I have to come all the way around and turn. And all those little, what you calling turn, 18-wheelers, and, and cars be lined up where you can't even, I can't even go across sometime to go to Heinzville. So, it's a, right in between my house and the subdivision that he's building is very congested. It's congested anyway, but it's gonna be, I, I'm not, you know, um, really opposing him doing it, but it have to be through DOT or some kind of to make some changes. It's gonna, it's, it's...
We'll lobby on your behalf.
It's Jeff.
We'll lobby on your behalf.
Next. The DOT come back right here, stop from about right there. Is there a decel, are, are you looking at a decel lane?
We're, we're proposing to do a decel lane, uh, at least one decel lane for, um, on the first drive, and potentially a second decel lane for the, because we have to have two points of access over 75 lots, so there'll be two, two drives that come in, like what's on the concept plan. And if GDOT makes us have two, then we'll have two decel lanes.
But you'll at least have one.
It will at least have one, yes, sir. I wanted, I, I made the comment at the LCPC meeting, but I think, you know, GDOT has some very specific rules when it comes to speed limits, and I, I would be afraid if they came and did their speed study here, they'd have to raise the speed limit because people are going so fast on it. Um, it really needs some, and, and I have been seeing some policing here in the last couple of weeks. I've been seeing a lot of people get... But policing would be the first step, um, start writing some tickets out there. Because I do think the speed is appropriately posted per GDOT's requirements and standards, if that makes sense. I, you know, they all have rules that they have to follow.
We just, we, we just don't abide by them.
Right, that's right. It, it's driver behavior.
Y'all heard the "we."
That, that has to be changed.
Yeah.
You're exactly right, so just wanted to make that comment. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, well, Mr. Chairman, I don't know how to, how to do this, but I just want to ask, Mr.?
I called him Jefferson right on.
Mr. Darlene, if they were to come up with a, a decel lane, would that make you feel?
And when you say decel lane, is, what type of lane is that?
That, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Turnoff lane.
That would not be in the line, the main line of traffic. It would be a lane like you, you have a chance to get off while your other traffic is really getting by you and turn and make a right turn.
Oh, yeah. That'd be perfect. You have a chance to get over into a lane before I get to my house instead of just being on the main lane. Because they, no?
No.
For her house.
No.
Before the subdivision, it had those folk going to that subdivision, uh, because it's, as Marcus says, it's required because of the number of lots. That's, that's DOT's recommendation. Now, as he said, you know, we can always approach these people, we have no power. They have their own independent bodies, so I don't have I don't have a problem as, uh...
See, they, they think nobody's turning, so they just
Yeah, they just
Don't look at lights, don't, I mean, blinkers, nothing, and then...
And of course, we can reach out to the sheriff too. We can do that.
Yeah.
That's not a problem. That's not a problem.
Mr. Chairman, I, I see, uh, I see her point. If the decel lane was toward 84, further toward 84, before you get to her house, that'd give her the opportunity to get in the lane.
Right, 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 right.
And, and the people that's coming into the subdivision, but the decel lane is for the subdivision, which means she's, you know, she, she misses that point.
But wouldn't that decel lane start somewhere back here? It wouldn't start right here at the subdivision?
Wait, it start, what?
All right?
It's for the subdivision.
It's for the subdivision, but it wouldn't start right at the subdivision, shouldn't it?
So, right now, there, each one of these lots, so you see the lots to the left of that first inch of road, that lot's 218 feet. Something like that.
Okay.
Then I think that the, the storage for the decel lane is a, uh, a 300-foot with a 75-foot taper, if I remember correctly. It ends up, it does kind of approach her lot, but then that ta, it tapers off right there. DOT standard, uh, length length. So, it comes close, if I remember right, it comes just past the, the little bump out for the turnaround, right there.
It's almost a decel lane there now, but they, people use it, you know, to stop for, I guess, emergency or something.
Oh, really?
That little lane.
The bump out?
Yeah.
A bump out's there? Okay, okay.
It goes just on her property side.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. All right, got it.
Okay.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
All right.
For coming and representing your neighborhood.
Keep pumping your brakes, darling.
All right, uh...
Ready?
Jeff, what was the, what was LCPC?
Planning Commission recommended approval with standard conditions.
I follow, right, LCPC recommendation.
Is there a second to the motion?
Okay.
Motion and second, follow us with peace recommendation with all the discussion that we had, and Marcus, is there anything we can do to help? You know what we always ask you? All right, okay. All in favor? Raise your right hand, please. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I
Um, let me, let me make a mental note. Well, not a mental note. Um, Mr. Brown, if you will make a note, let's ask the sheriff if he would, even now. You know, we don't want anybody getting in, unless there are tickets, but if that's going on, there's a problem in our area, and she says that she's the witness, then we'll ask the sheriff to.
And I, I don't think they could patrol much more than, than they doing now, every time I go down there.
If somebody's down there.
84 to 17, I see at least six of them on either side.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just me.
All right, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I know y'all talked about a lot of design things. Just wanted to remind you, you already know this, but, uh, this was just the zoning, so you get another crack at this when they bring you the subdivision plans.
Okay, okay.
Get to get into the details a little more then.
All right, all right. At least, Marcus, know where we headed.
That's right. Okay. The next request, the final request for the evening, is a request by David McDonnell Enterprises to rezone 30 acres, 30.51 acres of land from A-1 and, uh, from A-1 to R-1 in the Gum Branch area near the intersection of Groover Road and Ray Road. And parcel number is 014-019. Groover Road in this area, in the area where the subdivision, or the proposed rezoning is, has an 80-foot right-of-way adjacent to this development. And Ray Road has a 40-foot right-of-way. And each lot that he's proposing to do in this R-1 subdivision would be more than an acre. And we've advertised this property. You can see a sign on both Ray Road and Groover Road. You can see that Groover Road is a paved road and Ray Road is a dirt road, and we've advertised that in the Independent Mail, I mean, in the Coastal Courier, of course. Um, the, just to kind of give you a picture here, the, uh, this is the, uh, Highway 196, and this is Groover Road. So, it's down, and this is, this is Ray Road, so you can, it's down on the intersection, and he's, uh, this is the property that he, you might recall, he dreaded, he, he got some property up here and got a start on something a while, uh, several years ago, and had some issue with the Corps. I think he's planning on coming back with that at some later time, but this has nothing to do with that. This is a 30-acre tract down here that he wants to divide. And it's just a locational map there. And this is the zoning map. You can see that the, uh, all the property is on A-1. There is a property there on the corner that is an out parcel, it's left out of this, so he's, he's just gonna subdivide, wants to rezone and subdivide this piece. And this is his, uh, conceptual plan for how he's gonna subdivide it. Groover Road here, uh, Ray Road here, and he's just gonna cut, cut off lots off of Groover Road. Our zoning analysis, uh, property does have, uh, reasonable value as it's currently zoned. His proposal is consistent with the J-LUS. It's consistent with the, with the comprehensive plan because it's, uh, is designated as agricultural and forestry and secondary use as, as single-family. as single-family residential, which is what he's proposing to do. The R1 that he's asking for is the most restrictive single-family use that you have in the county, or single-family zone. Uh, we haven't identified any adverse effects on neighboring properties, uh, the proposed use would be suitable in, in view of nearby properties, uh, there aren't any, uh, any burdens on the transportation and, uh, public utility system. Uh, this does not allow a short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals, it might cause a domino effect, cause this is a relatively undeveloped area, and if this develops and is successful, uh, there may be, uh, demand for other similar developments in the area. We haven't identified any historical sites that would be impacted, uh, this is not in a flood hazard area, uh, it's not spot zoning, and we haven't identified any unique, uh, conditions with support approval or denial. Planning Commission heard this at their last meeting and they recommend approval with standard conditions, and we're glad to answer any questions that you have about this one.
Commissioner Thrift, you want to speak to this?
Yes, yes, sir, I haven't heard anything, um, pro or com, was there anyone at the meeting on this particular?
Not on this one, other than Mr. Sack.
Okay. Okay, that's always a good thing. And you sent out, and no one, I haven't heard anyone oppose this, um, but, so if we approve the rezon and then you'll come back with the site plan, is that correct? And did you say it was ten, ten acres lots is what he's wanting?
There will be, uh, there will be minimum one acre lot, cause they're gonna have individual well and septic tanks on them. And then shared driveways is what we're proposing all along, um, the pay road.
Mm-hmm.
That'll be, um, for this portion that's being rezoned, and the other portion that was rezoned previously.
Mm-hmm.
So this, the, the development as a total will go from seventy-six lots down to somewhere around thirty lots, so we're decreasing the density.
On what we're rezoning tonight?
Yep.
Okay.
So, th- this is just ten of the thirty.
Ten of the thirty, okay.
But I'm, I'm kind of including the northern portion and the southern portion that Mr. McDonald owns.
Mm-hmm. And I would send that, the one map, go back, that had the star on it? I assume there were some wetlands in there back behind, is that, right there?
Right, so, um, as, as Jeff indicated, um, Mr. McDonald originally got tangled up with the Army Corps of Engineers, um, for illicit, in regard to filling wetlands, so all of that, um, has, has been dealt with, uh, to the extent that he's got an agreement with EPA. Um, on a path forward to clean that up, and as a part of that agreement, he's being allowed to develop, um, what is now considered the upland areas. But those wetland areas, if you go out there today, they don't look like wetland areas, and that's because they're full of dirt that has been placed there. Um, so part of his agreement with EPA is to remove that dirt and plant trees there to bring them back to the wetlands that they once were.
So he can't, he won't be able to develop in there?
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct. Anything with that hatching will not be developed.
Okay, and are those like lots, those two like mountain-looking things that are there on the dirt road part?
Those two are not planned to be lots right now.
Okay, alright, so really, there won't be any lots on the dirt?
That, that's the current plan.
Okay, okay, alright, okay?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Chairman?
Commissioners, y'all got any, alright?
Yes, Mr.
We'll, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning petition for Mr. David McDonald.
Second.
Twenty-twenty-two dash zero-zero-five dash LC.
Your second still counts, yeah.
Okay.
Motion second, we approve the, uh, rezoning petition as presented by LCPC. Any further discussion with standard conditions? All in favor, Rick, raise your right hand, please. Alright, it's approved, sir. Marcus, he does plan to, at some time, develop the, the first piece, okay. Alright, what, what makes things move much smoother, but he would keep in touch with this commissioner right here for him. Okay, well, you.
Oh, last time he came to see me.
We know ahead of what's going on.
This is gonna be down the road sometime, if it's down the road.
Yes.
Alrighty, that's all, Mr. Jeff, thank you, sir. Uh, now, where am I going? Uh, rezoning, let's see, got those, got those, Bill Carter Road bids, is that where I am, sir? Uh, chairman, motion go back to open session. Motion here, is that second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand, back in open session, alright.
A couple weeks ago, we took bids on a full depth reclamation of Bill Carter Road, tried to review, rebuild Bill Carter Road, and this got some pretty good failures on it, and it's kind of deteriorating pretty quickly. You should have a copy of the bid tabulation that we received. We had three bids, uh, the lowest bid was from APAC Atlantic for eight hundred fifty-two thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars. Our original bid, our original bid, our original budget was five hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Whoa.
So, um, we've gone back, uh, met with, uh, Kim, met with Joey, looked at the funding for this project that's available, uh, we do have some LMEG money, funding available, but we don't have enough money to, uh, take this right now. What we would like to do is reject all bids and, uh, see if we can't search for some additional funding, and then, uh, bid this out again at a later date, a little later on this year, I see, get a little bit better prices and do a little something different, but right now, we just don't have the funds, uh, in our sales tax to be able to take care of this project.
Sounds good. Mr. Chair, Mr. Long, this was including widening of the road, right?
Yes, sir, it widens at two feet and it does full depth reclamation so that we can get rid of all the redding and, uh, we're starting to fall apart.
Well, let's shoot for a lower price.
Yes, sir, we'll do it.
Motion to reject the bid, please.
Yes, sir, I'll make a motion.
Second. Second.
Second.
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Trent, when you said that we, um, I guess, hoping and praying for a, a lower price, is that, we're thinking that, um, the cost of material may go down, or one of these bidders gonna have a change of heart?
Well, we have a few other bidders that may be able to look at it that.
Other, other than these?
Give us better prices and.
Okay.
Also, I, I, I need to, we, we need to find some additional funding and allow some funding to build with these lots, and, uh, we just need to, we need to find some more money.
Mr. Long, make a phone call up to Atlanta and see what you can find.
Yes, sir, I'll do what I can do on that.
Alright, we good?
Alright.
Yeah, I just hope that, uh, if there's some other bidders out there, I hope they are listening in on Facebook. Give us a break here, all in favor rejecting the bid? Alright, let's start over, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Southside Park funding request, I neglected to remind Mr. Jenkins to make tonight's meeting, tell him about it, but I didn't get to remind him.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as, um, some of us attended the groundbreaking for the, the Southside Park and being in my district and, uh, I'm trying to read, I don't have my glasses, but was it, it was one point one is what it came in, is that correct?
Actually, it's been up to one point six.
Hold up, Joey.
Where are you at?
That's what was sent.
Sorry, uh, it came, it came in at one point six, it's been up to one point six for the full park project?
Oh, yeah.
Because the first phase came in two hundred thousand dollars over.
Okay, one point six for phase one and two?
That's what, that's what it's estimated to be, now they haven't bid phase two yet.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, uh, right now, we're just looking at approval for phase one?
Yes.
Is that correct, which is the one point one in his email?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's.
Is that right?
One point one.
Okay. Alright, I'll take anyone that wants to help.
Well, I'm gonna help.
I know Marion's out, about time.
Well.
Come on, Mary.
Yeah, I think that was real nice for Kim to go ahead and send all that stuff out, but.
Yeah, I, I, Kim, Kim's pretty good.
Does.
She does what Joy asks.
I would like to comment, you know, um, on this, uh, and first of all, is that it's, it's a nice-looking project and.
Really is.
I really didn't get the, the call to help, I'd already have something else planned, but I, I, I do, don't need to remind the board, I know we all are sure that what's out there, but we know that right now that there's not been, um, Gil Park's not finished, Miller Park, uh, have you moved the ribbon at, at, uh, Miller Park yet, Trent? Okay, so, that's two that's out there, and I know you drive by it every day, Commissioner Thrift, uh, the one in Gum Branch, and this one right here, I'm assuming from what I'm looking at, and Commissioner Gillen, you may be able to tell me, it being a, of course, it'll be the Airport Road, Southside Park, but will this be looked after by ESG, or will this be looked after by the Liberty County Recreation Department?
Well, uh, the only thing I know is that there were officials from the, from the city and county there, um, and there are some parks, um, in the city, for instance, um, Irene B. Thomas Park, I think the city does, um, I think the police open and close it, but I think the county maintains the grounds over there, right, Joy?
On which park?
Irene Thomas, off of one ninety-six. And, um, but it hasn't been discussed, um, from me and Mr. Howard hadn't talked about that, um, that the city would maintain it if they do, it, it would be maintained by the Public Works Department, which would be ESG, but, um, we hadn't got to that point yet. Um, with, with the, you know, just the layout of it, it, it kind of looks like, you know, with the ball fields and, and the multi-use fields, it kind of looks like something that the, the county, um, may maintain, but, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
Joey, I thought, excuse me, Commissioner Wallen, I thought I remembered some preliminary conversation we had about the city, um, at least providing most of the maintenance for this park, don't I recall that conversation?
I recall a conversation about the city helping somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
But there, there had been a conversation earlier about the department, about Liberty County Recreation.
Yeah, wouldn't be a total county, I remember that.
Well, the, 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 the issue is, is we've had one city councilman to come up here and tell us something that he wanted in his district. I guess he conveyed that to the rest of the board, I don't have any idea, but I'm just saying, I'm not going, uh, you know, the mayor of the council has mod approached, and, and they may have approached you and said, this is what we'd like for y'all to do, but I still think that the park is important, I mentioned that to the, the city councilman that was here that day, it is a area that needs some, um, some recreation out there in it, but as far as us, um, putting money in there before they spent their money, I say let's, uh, you know, let's work alongside of them, I'm, I, I know that I've committed some money to ADA, and I've committed some money to different parks around, and I would like for us to get ours done, and then we'll, we don't mind helping them.
Well, the city is, um, and, and he, he explained it when he was here, seven hundred and, I forget the odd number, seven hundred and, plus thousand dollars is what the city is applying to the park.
I think that's right.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a.
That's about half, Brian.
Partnership.
Are you saying the city is?
Yes.
Putting that in it, or that in kind?
No, no, that's in it, that's that monetary portion.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
So it sound like they're about a half a million out.
For the first phase.
For the first phase of it, mm-hmm.
Well, let's spend the, let's spend theirs and let's see where they're at, we'll get theirs spent if they need a little bit, will?
No, I'm gonna give some.
Yeah, I'm gonna give some too, yeah.
I've, I've already told the councilmen.
Yeah, we told him that when he was here.
That I would give some of, so.
Well, yeah, we all did, Commissioner Thrift, I said I would, but I'm saying, let's, let, let's let them have the, they've got the, the ball in their court, let's let them go ahead and start, and if we need to help them, we can help them, but I mean, there's nothing been done that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars since.
Well, I'm sure that they won't release the phones until there's something done.
Do what now?
I don't, I don't believe Kim would release the phones until we get there.
Right.
You know.
Yeah.
But I think we need to obligate it, or I am, to make sure the project gets up and going, and that the city is aware that, that we told them that we were willing to help.
Do, do we need to, um, let's say to, Mr. Chairman, the, the total cost, let's say the one point six that's in this, uh, memo from Mr. Howard, do we need to, um, with what the city is obligated, or what their, their part is, do we need to obligate the remainder before the project starts?
Of the one point one, I believe.
Of the one point one?
Right, for phase one.
We need to obligate it before it starts, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So that's, um, you said seven, how much by the city, Mr. Jefferson, seven hundred and fifty thousand?
Seven fifty.
It's at least seven fifty, yeah.
At least seven fifty, and, and we need a total of one point one?
Yeah, so what's that, about?
That's two fifty.
Three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand.
So.
I'm good for a hundred.
That's two fifty.
And Justin, he ought to be good for what, about four hundred?
Let me look at his, uh, balance that Kim gave me here.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Comment, please. Um, and I'm learning more as we go, I'm understanding this to be a joint city.
Proposal.
County proposal. As Commissioner, on the end, mentioned that we still have parks that we're trying to complete, um, county by themselves. I know I have one in my, uh, the district that I represent, that we have a lot of improvement still left to do, I think a bunch of it is unfunded still, um, not knowing where all of the money is going to come from, or hasn't been allocated yet, if I'm not mistaken. I really couldn't see myself committing to, I guess, unknown sum as of right now, I mean, I couldn't see myself committing equally as all of the other commissioners.
We understand.
Because of what I have in, uh, yeah, in my district.
We understand.
So I really don't see myself making a solid commitment of saying X amount of dollars that I could commit as of right now. Um, I like the suggestion that we see what the city does when they spend all of theirs, what we got left, or maybe I could see in attending it, again, at a later point, but.
But maybe phase two, you can participate.
Because I think my kitty is a little bit less than a lot of others.
It is, it is, it is, well, we'll take it.
Mr. Chair.
Some of us are not in the, in your position.
Yeah, I think both of us are in the same situation, I mean, and I said, I want to thank the other commissioners that contribute toward Miller Park, but we still, we're just doing the groundwork at Miller Park and still not have a pavilion, so we still got a long ways to go at Miller Park. I mean, and, it's probably, it, it looks like a real good concept, and, um, I'm not saying it's not needed, but I'm like Commissioner Jones, uh, we're still struggling trying to finish up one of the oldest parks in Liberty County, and it's on the main road, and I'm not saying Airport Road is not a main road now, but this Miller Park is one of the main and oldest, you know, oldest park in the county, and we've been struggling for this ever since I've been on the road.
You know, those of us that could have obligated to help with that too.
Yeah, that's been twenty. Yeah, that's been 23 years.
Mr. Chairman, uh, look, look, we have, um, down at the Eastern Complex, isn't there some other stuff to do? Like, wasn't there a trail, walking trail? Along with the gymnasium and, um, well, I know the walking trail was talked about.
And a pavilion.
And a pavilion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's.
Phase, whatever that it will be.
Okay.
That phase has been forgotten about almost.
No, I haven't forgotten about it.
But, but say, um, the Eastern Complex, Gill Park, Miller Park, um.
Joey, excuse me for, don't do trans talk. Now, I, we were finishing up the walking trail at Gill Park.
We were, that's, that's.
That's the last piece.
That is the next piece. It's already been funded there. It's the, the, really the Phase Three of Gill that hasn't been funded, correct?
We, we didn't have a softball field down at Gill Park?
No.
No softball, uh, it was just to do, it was just to do the walking trails, but the fields really, the fields and the retention pond would be the things that are lacking down there.
Yeah, I remember we used to, uh, play against the Jones Brothers down there, but they done built the dollar store over there for me. So, so we, we can't come back, we can't come back now.
What are we looking at, Kim?
You, you, you're doing the math, where are we?
Yeah, um, it was, Mr. Moses said it was 350.
And then the chairman was.
Commissioner Thrift had a, a hundred, and you had a hundred.
I have a hundred.
Yep.
Okay, so we.
We need 150.
Need 150?
Yes, sir.
I was, um.
Uh-oh, watch out.
No, I, I.
He asked how much he has. You, right now, you have in your district, unobligated, 364,000.
How much?
364,000.
Okay, what is obligated, what, what's out there, um?
You've obligated 80,000 for the ADA improvements, and 300,000 for Miller Park, and the chairman obligated 200,000 for Miller Park, and then Commissioner Stevens obligated funds for Miller Park.
Are, are we short at Miller Park with, with all those obligations?
Yeah.
We don't have the pavilion.
We don't have.
Still don't have the pavilion.
Right, we're rebidding the pavilion.
Right, and he had to go to his T-Sblos.
T-Sblos to help out.
200 and some odd thousand.
And we were thinking maybe we could use some ARPA funds.
For?
I thought we did pull some ARPA funds.
For Miller?
Yeah.
Um.
I thought we pulled the ones from.
I don't think for Miller Park you didn't.
Now, there is some still, um, what we call contingency money in ARPA that has not been allocated, but we didn't have something for, we, we did not specifically list.
Y'all check the minutes, now, we fixed that Miller Park.
We'd covered, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about ARPA funds going to Miller Park.
Put together some.
Like 100,000, maybe?
It might have been 300,000.
For Miller Park, we did.
Yes, because we had 400,000 in it for another park. Jones Creek. And I remember the chairman said he didn't want to pull all of it, so we, we pretty well agreed to the 300,000. I thought that's what we did. For Miller Park.
I just know, we, we pulled from funding sources to cover the cost of Miller Park, I can tell you that. We, the minutes, they'll reflect that, but I can't tell you the exact.
Yeah.
The contract that we award.
The infrastructure side.
I even thought we, because.
We didn't know, we don't have a price for it.
We're gonna look for rebid.
It was for the infrastructure, which was.
All we had was.
Yeah, which was the infrastructure was over a million.
Let me, let me ask you, you had your piece of paper during you.
Two years.
While she's looking, uh, Miller Park wasn't on there, you had Liberty County Community Complex Walking Trail, Gill, Gill Park Walking Trail, which is how that's getting funded. Jones Creek Parking Restrooms.
400.
Fitness Equipment, James A. Brown Park, and the Fishing Pier.
Yeah.
That's where we pulled it from, Jones Creek.
No, sir, y'all didn't agree to do that last time.
We talked about pulling it from, uh, you're right, we had to get another bid because it was.
No, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't, it was brought up about maybe pulling money.
Yeah.
From.
Jones Creek.
From Jones Creek, but that.
We didn't finalize.
We, we, when we adopted this budget.
You didn't commit to do that.
That's what was in there, right?
Yeah.
But you're right, we did talk about.
Talked about.
So, how can we go back and correct that?
Well, that's.
So that we're gonna pull money from Jones Creek and put it towards Miller Park for the pavilion?
Uh, well, that's whatever y'all wanna do.
I, I'll be honest with you, I would, how, how much money do we need now?
We need 150,000.
150,000.
150,000.
Let's split it, Eddie.
Each of y'all have obligated 100? Yes.
Okay, me and Gary, or, or Commissioner Gill, we're gonna split that, but I don't want to take nothing out of what, what we've already got out there. I don't think that's the right thing to do. I mean, I don't think we need to take away funds from any of our other parks, Jones Creek, I, I don't know what's left that's gotta be done on it, but I'll say let's, let's leave that. And that's just me. I'm just, y'all do whatever you want to do. But I'm just saying, if we've done already identified it once, then the public is gonna expect it. Somebody might get it between the next 20 years, but if we've committed that, let's, let's go forward with it. I just don't think we.
Well, I, I need, Trent, I, I had a, I was proposing a road project, let's, let's just hold off on that. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, what, what you've done so far, that, that's good, but, um, let, let's hold off on that.
How much is that you're holding off on?
How much are you holding off on?
Well, I mean, he hadn't given me, I mean, just what he's done so far, that there's, he hadn't touched on, hadn't done anything. He's just been doing the surveying and stuff like that, so ho, ho, hold off on that, that'd give me, um, some funds to, um, to, to, to help out. Um, I, I wanna, I was looking at what I had, and we were gonna go 75 apiece, Eddie?
Yeah.
Seventy-five apiece?
Yeah, so that we can lock in this first phase of, of this park.
Okay, so in total, we are committing 350,000 to Phase One of the South Side Park.
Yes.
Right.
Right, okay.
Got it.
And, and, um, I'll see what, what, what I got left in, um, where, where do we need to, um, to, who, who else do I need to help out? I'll help.
Pavilion at, um.
Pavilion at Miller Park. Okay.
And, and, and that's one thing that I wanna.
Once they get the bid.
We get through from that. We, that ought to be a, that ought to be a, a nice complex.
And, and, uh, Gill Park, we've al, we've funded the, the trail.
ARPA's funding the walking trail, what you got left there is the, is the playfield and the pond.
And, so, and we got funds already set aside for the.
What did he?
For the walking.
Everything at Gill Park could be done?
No, sir, just for the walking trail.
Okay, so, and what, what would be left at?
Uh, the playfields and the pond.
Let me go ahead and say, uh, the commissioner prior to this, commissioner, how do I say it, did not prioritize the pond.
Correct.
That, that's your call. He didn't really prioritize the pond, but it was in the.
Is that a hole in pond or a fishing pond?
It was in the concept.
Really, really partially both, re, really partially both.
Those that they didn't say fishing pond, what they had planned.
But that's, that's your call now, so you're in, you're in that seat now.
And if, and if you need some help with it, um.
You'll all help with that too?
Yeah.
We, we, we.
All right, we're good?
I, I, I don't know, I maybe, I just, and I didn't want to speak too much out, but I don't, I don't think we do, I mean, Commissioner Gill, it, it's a road, and I know it's important, and somewhere along the line there, we'll get some money and we'll fix that track road.
We will.
But these other ones out here, if we've identified them, I mean, right now, we have, we put a name on, on that gymnasium for a fellow that I thought a lot of, Mr. Sam Harris, and it looks the same right now as it did before.
Yeah.
And I just think that if we.
It's moving forward.
Well, I, I, I know we will, and I just don't want to take no money away from it, it's.
No, we didn't, no, we didn't touch that, we didn't touch that, no.
So, right now, we, whatever we funded is still funded, right, Joyce?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we didn't unfund.
We haven't unfunded anything.
No, no, no.
We, we, we got everything we need for Phase One.
But we knew from the ARPA funds that there was some, what, flexibility, fluidity, as they say, where you could maneuver if you needed to, so that's why.
Remember, we got some flexibility right here.
Park at that.
Hey, we got some flexibility right here.
Thank you tonight for what we've done, we don't have to touch into that, so everything's where it was.
But I mean, the way that, the way we're set up with our sales tax, we can all vote right up here tonight to take the money from that commissioner that's not up here, we can just all vote to get it. There really ain't nothing we can do.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
And you, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm gonna, we do need a motion in a second to utilize your funds for that purpose, which is the official authorization, and then move those funds out of those.
All right, Chair, turn the motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve moving the funds to, um, help out with Phase One with the City of Heinzville at the South Side Park. Do I need to list the total, the amounts?
Just, just for the record out of the districts, I think, in that, in that way, because those monies are allocated out there.
District, uh, Three would obligated 100,000, Chairman obligated 100,000. Districts Five and Six obligated 775,000 each.
Thank you.
That's my motion.
All in favor, reach my hand.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I did, yeah.
Second.
Thank you. Ready to vote.
Yes, sir.
You know, we had the worst time spending money.
Well, that's good, in a way.
You know what, it's a blessing to have it to spend.
That's good.
I know, but I just.
It's a blessing to have it.
Okay.
All right. Move on.
Spreading it around.
All right.
Just, y'all good? Young people say you're straight.
How much money I got left now, Kim?
Comprehensive fire plan. Yes, sir.
This chair members of the board, which were, which.
An EMS, sir.
Who's running that going?
I'm sorry.
This tonight? Um. As, as, uh, we move forward, you guys made a commitment to stand up a full-time fire department, as well as to take on the Liberty County EMS, and part of what you're seeing is putting together a structure that is making sure, uh, that you have two organisms, two department, two divisions that run, uh, moving efficiently, and making sure that you're paying competitive wages to recruit and retain the best personnel. Uh, we contracted with the University of Georgia's Carvinson Institute of Government to develop a classification and compensation plan for the county's EMS and Fire Service Department. Uh, the project commenced in August of last year, and it just was completed, uh, on last week. Uh, what they were contracted to do is develop new job descriptions, which identified all full-time and part-time positions. Uh, previously, not all fire positions in the hocky were defined, and we did that through this process. And also, uh, when we acquired the EMS, uh, from the hospital, um, the, uh, job descriptions were written in another manner, more of a, um, in a private market way, these were designed in more of a government setting. Also, we developed a new classification system by using a point-fact comparison job evaluation system on market-based pricing. Uh, EMS and fire, like, included fine pay structures, and what this did is to ensure, again, that we have a pedative, uh, a competitive, um, recruitment process and retain employees. They also collected and analyzed wage and survey data, they analyzed and formatted wage service data for use to establish competitive pay levels, and then they partnered with Liberty County Administrative Personnel and Component of Fire, Sure, Implementation. First step of the process that they did is they analyzed existing job descriptions, uh, which we didn't have a whole lot for fire, but they analyzed all the ones that we acquired from the Liberty County Regional Hospital. We had them to do, all the employees to do job questionnaires, uh, ones that were, like, EMTs got together and, and put together EMT, paramedics got together and put together the paramedics. Um, then they also consulted with, uh, Crystal and with Brian as, as the job descriptions were being put together, and kept on having input meetings to make sure that we, that they captured all the data, and from that, they created new job descriptions. Second part of it was, how do we talk about the pay part, making sure we have the competitive salaries? Um, they utilized market-based wage data to evaluate 16 positions, 10 in, uh, fire and six in EMS, and then they, uh, looked at two administrative positions and two management positions. The two administrative positions, one from fire, one from, uh, EMS, and likewise, the chief administrative, uh, or division head, they looked at it for fire and EMS as well, using the factor evaluation system. And basically, the factor evaluation system, it's about the things like skills, supervisor level, a list of, of 10 skill sets, or 10 factors that they look at in the process. Uh, in compiling the data, they looked at Bureau of Labor Statistics, and they used data, we, we actually did a customized survey. They sent out a customized survey, uh, to some communities of similar size, and also a number of cities in the region. And what they were looking at, or what their recommendation was, is they, when they put a, a person on the scales, they wanted to do it at an entry-level wage rate, at the medium-market rate. These were the communities that we, uh, acquired information from. Uh, as you can see, most of them are, are communities in the region. The counties Brian, Bullet, Campbell, Cadham, Evans, Wayne, Cities of Heinzville, Pula, and Savannah. We sent out more, uh, surveys to other communities, but they didn't necessarily respond. At this time, I'm gonna turn this portion of the presentation over to Ms., Ms. Woody, and she's gonna go into a little more data.
Okay, so let's talk about the implementation strategy. And, uh, in your packet that was sent to you last week, there was a copy of the UGA study, and so this is referring to tables in that document. So, the compensa, compensation plan that was developed by UGA, we want to assign all of the employees, both part-time and full-time in both divisions, to the recommended classification and their salary grade, or their pay grade. Uh, we looked, when we looked at the employees, we looked at what were, what are they making today? And then we placed them on the closest step on the new scale, just above their annual salary. And in all, we are affecting almost 100 employees altogether, about 50 full-time, 47 part-time. Now, Carl Vincent estimated a cost in that same report of 104,409 dollars. Now, this cost is based on salary data from back in December 2021, when we were getting into the details with the study. This estimate does not include things like overtime, because there is scheduled overtime for firefighters and EMTs and paramedics, didn't include holiday pay, didn't include benefit costs. So, what we did is we put together on the next slide, a true representation of all of the costs that would be involved in implementing the plan. And when we break it down, this is annual, but when we break it down to a monthly, and then look at the remainder of this fiscal year, it comes to just under 90,000 dollars to implement this.
It's from now until June?
Yes. So at the top, you see regular hours, the scheduled overtime, because EMS, they are, uh, not exempt from overtime. Whereas firefighters have the K exemption, so they have a little less overtime. And then retirement, FICO, workers' comp.
Mr. Chairman, on the full-time, the scheduled overtime, that 30,000, about how, how many hours is that annual? Or is that just for the five months?
Well, that would be annually.
Annually?
Right, and so say a shift worker in EMS, they work two 24-hour shifts a week. Which is 48 hours. Well, 40 is paid regular time, and then those eight other hours are paid at time and a half. And so that's every week of the year.
This is just for EMS?
In that first column that she referenced, the 30,000.
Is that possible that a, that a EMS person could make that amount annually? The 110, about 113,000? No, am I missing?
The whole group.
Oh.
Whole group, yes.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm on there now. Okay.
Any other questions, um?
Uh. You say that we, you compared it to other counties? Do these counties have a dual role in their service fire slash, uh, EMS, or were they just EMS service provided? Or just fire service?
What I'm looking at there, uh, for the counties, Brian may have a station or two they run consolidated with EMS, but basically, you're all.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Uh, maybe, maybe Brian, but that would be the only one that would have any kind of joint EMS fire.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, did, did we, um, refresh my memory, did we look at this, um, proposal? Cause we don't think we're in line with the other. Cause we don't think we're in line with the other communities, or?
We basically, you know, when we assumed EMS and we knew that, when we took it in, it's kind of like he highlighted in this slide, there was no paying classification system. I mean, it was a myriad of different payment schemes and premium hours and weekend premiums and week premiums, and I mean, it was, there was no structure. And so this was to put them in a structure that's consistent with our structure, basically, which we had to do. Fire, the only thing that was in the pay structure were the people that you had on hand at the time. And so what you're looking at now, that you've approved going to the full-time fire, is the full structure build-out plan. But to answer your question, there were no plans for these divisions. And so that's the reason it had to be looked at. We had to have a pay structure to pay them by.
So to implement it going forward, that five months was the eighty or almost ninety thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
So if we go into it for annually, we may be looking on maybe two hundred thousand?
It was.
Two hundred fifteen?
Two fifteen.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Let me, one more caveat there, I think, to say this too. Would you assume that that's going to be your cost? I would hope so, but the fact is, the jobs, you know, we have openings.
Yeah.
And you are really, really not going to see that total expenditure in a full year. You know, unless we have to back up and double over and do overtime. But the fact is, we haven't been able to fill shifts, which is a common problem among all these agencies you're seeing. So, you know, the other part of that, and, you know, probably a little bit from where Commissioner Stevens was coming from too, is that in the COVID environment we're in, it has accelerated the competition for trying to, we're all pulling from the same labor force. So we've got to be not only structured, but we've got to be very competitive in these markets.
Mr. Brown. Mr. Mosley. I'm just looking at Appendix A, where you got the grade. You got an administrative assistant, which is a twelve. Then you go down to the bottom of it, you got an administrative coordinator, which is a fourteen. What is the difference between those two?
I'm not sure who's in this.
The administrative assistant is the fire, in the fire services.
I can't, I can't hear you.
The administrative assistant?
Uh huh.
Is the position in fire services. And that's the office worker who answers the phones and does paperwork. Whereas the administrative coordinator for EMS also handles all the billing.
Okay. All right. Now, one other question I got is, if you have somebody on board who's been here four years, and someone who just come on, how do you keep both of them at a twenty-four? Or do they go out a step?
They would go out a step or more, depending where they're at.
They will go out, the one that.
Right, so say they're on a twenty-two right now, and they're going to twenty-four. They would be moved to the twenty-four, to the next highest step. So they wouldn't be starting out as an A. They're probably going to be a C or a D.
And I'm not trying to knock anybody out of any, any money or anything like that, but I'm just looking at what we already had and what we accepted, you know? And it's good that we can do this, because like you say, we were at the point of losing some people. And let me throw this in here. While we're not only doing this, Board of Commissioners, we need to look at the insurance that is provided to the employees that is at a lower wedge level. Okay? But that was one of my concerns, and I think my last, well, two questions. Can y'all say that out of this study, we got everything in here that we needed now? Or do we, in a couple of months, we'll have to come back and go look at it again?
I'll answer, I think we've got everything in here. It's been pretty inclusive. We've taken our time to do it, we've looked at it and relooked at it again, relooked at where positions were already to ensure we didn't have anybody that bumps up to that equity compression problem. And by doing this, if you choose to do it tonight, it'll actually go into place before the merit goes in. So it will help with that attrition even more, with those people that are already there.
Now, that leads into another question, Board members. This study has been going on for how long now? About two, two months, three?
Well.
August?
Well, on and off, but you know, the other thing is too, that we engaged the contractor to do it. So it's been something we knew we needed to do before we ever assumed EMS. We just had to get into their schedule to be able to do it.
My question is, I think I've asked around, Mr. Brown, or Board members, do we need to consider part of this being retro or not? This is, you know, Board members, I'm just asking.
I wouldn't recommend you do retro on that, because then you're looking at the annual compensation of folks totally. Our recommendation is definitely not to retro any kind of new paying classification system that you ever do, to tell you the truth. Go one step further too. Your insurance concern, we've actually gone and I've already sent an email. These aren't the only areas, as you know, that are affected really by family coverage. Your insurance rates on your other plan, you've got a, you've got a luxury plan that's offered through Blue Cross Blue Shield. And the county pays for that, of course, but the family coverage is where retention is happening. And so we've reached already out to Blue Cross Blue Shield and said, look, we want to talk about the family coverage, about what you got there. And quite honestly, it's going to mean that the commission probably will have to assume some more cost on family coverage rates, is the only way to drive that down. The other thing is, with this, is that we have talked to someone about taking another look at our total pay system. Not these, we won't be looking at these again, because, you know, as you mentioned, these will be up to date. But CDL drivers, everybody is suffering in the workforce right now. It's been almost four years since you looked at the rest of your positions. And so we've obtained a price for your budget consideration for them to look at that in July. So then you'll have your full gamut covered again. And that would include law enforcement, that is the whole pay structure.
Now, what would this do to the ones that's under the fifteen dollars an hour?
Nothing. Well, if, none of these are under fifteen, I don't believe, there may be one or two. But your fifte- we anticipate, we had a conversation with folks yesterday about that too. That's actually going to be something that comes to you sooner than we thought, for your consideration in March. We thought it wouldn't be finished until March, but it's definitely in March, we'll have you something to consider making those adjustments you want to make on the fifteen dollar.
Okay, so now we got one more study out there with UGA, correct?
Not really, no, sir.
Board of Elections?
I believe the Board of Elections is wrapping up also, right? Okay.
So this would take effect if we approve it?
Our recommendation is to, for it to coincide with its current budget, to go back and pick it up from January the twenty-third, to coincide with this particular pay period.
I can't hear you, well, I can't hear you on side.
We would like to implement it with the pay period we are currently in, dated back to January twenty-third.
Okay.
So it'd hit the paychecks next week.
Okay.
The Commissioners, feedback, please.
I wanted to ask a question. When you go back to your, scroll back to your overtime you had right there, and I see you've got the thirteen holidays. Is it thirteen now, or is it fourteen?
It's four?
It's thirteen. It was twelve.
It was twelve, now it's thirteen.
So let's, let's just say that, I mean, you've got your scheduled overtime, and then is there anywhere in there that you have overtime that's not scheduled? I mean, there's going to be some people that will be called in.
That's true.
So, and you're going to have some that's going to say, we're shorthanded, I got to work the holiday. That'll be overtime and the opportunity to take the holiday later, right? Is that how that works with this study?
Full-time employees are paid the holiday regardless. But you're right.
If they're working.
If they're working or not, but they only get the overtime.
If they're working.
If they're working.
The holiday pay wouldn't count.
So that's figured in there.
Well, only scheduled overtime, we don't have numbers on.
You don't have an estimate of how many overtime hours that you might have?
No.
So there's no way we can go back and look at a history and see that there's a possibility of a hundred and fifty to two hundred hours overtime?
In addition to regular overtime?
Right.
Yeah, no, sir, we don't have that history, because we've never run it.
But, so that's something we need to be looking at, because the same way with the fire.
I mean, yeah, really with anybody, right? With any position. I mean, if you're going to do that, you need to look at the road department, sanitation. I mean, but you wouldn't budget for it.
We never did.
I understand that. I just want to make sure that, you know, you've got X number of dollars captured there that, you know, that we know that's a possibility.
And I tell you, the other place that that happens, and you see it, we've talked about it, we, you know, we talked about a few minutes ago, is nine-one-one, obviously. But, you know, here's what happens. You budget to cover exactly what you're going to cover, but what we were talking about a minute ago with all the slots never being full, then really the free money from where you budgeted for a full-time staff is what carries that extra overtime.
Okay, and this being a new, it's not new to us, because we had it one time, but, I mean, the workings of it. You'll have this department head, the associate director, or whatever you want to call it, they'll be the ones in charge of accounting for this. It won't be left up to the employee to put it in.
Oh, no, sir, correct.
Everything will be put in, and that supervisor will be saying, okay, this is your core hours, which is the forty, or whatever it's going to be, sixty, or if it's a Panama shift from six in the evening to six in the morning. I mean, I don't understand.
Yes, sir, they're going to, they'll set, they'll set, they set those schedules several months in advance, in fact, for the emergency functions. And it's their responsibility to authorize change-outs to any shift and to keep track of any overtime that's accumulated in there.
Okay, and what Commissioner Stevens had mentioned in the, as far as insurance? That's.
It's figured, it's figured in that analysis you ran for benefits.
I do not have health insurance.
Oh, you didn't put health insurance in there? Okay. Well, they're paying.
Not everybody elects health insurance.
Yeah, that's true. Not everybody has it.
Where those are given hard numbers on benefits. The health insurance is going to depend on enrollment.
But I will say this, health insurance is already budgeted. It wouldn't be affected by this, because we have so many slots that are already authorized in the budget.
Right.
There's appropriated health insurance for each of those slots.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's, that's, you know, anyway, it could, it could make you or break you if they don't have it, and that's what I'm saying, you know, the salary is one thing, but the benefits, you know, I guess we pay a certain portion, and the employees would pay a portion. So, you know, that's, that is a benefit ours, but that's all I had. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, so what's, staff, what's your recommendation?
Our recommendation is you go ahead and move to adopt this tonight, because it's something you had planned for, both to get your structure in place and to be competitive in the environment and these public safety functions.
One other last question, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brown. What was the total cost of this study? Just curious, what was the total cost of this study?
Most of them are telling me ten thousand dollars.
Oh, ten thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They like a nice round figure.
All right, Chair and Chair of Motion.
I just have one question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brown, on that slide, that, where they went back in the cities that we were being, yeah. Would that be the same group when we do the second phase for the CDL drivers and everything? Would that be the same counties and cities that we measure against?
I hate to, I hate to, maybe none of our counterparts will hear us when we say this on live on Facebook, those are our competitors. Now, I would tell you that particular to CDLs, there might be some private companies in there too that we look at. You know, but yes, sir. We're not locked into these. There can be more, there can be less of these, there can also be some private.
Well, I guess when we picked those six counties in those three cities, was that because it was firing in EMS? That's why we went there, okay. And when we look at the other job classifications, it may or may not be these?
May or may not be. We generally have used all of these in our area, because this is where people drive to, to go to work and/or would come here to work. The others that didn't report, Glen County, I know was one, Tatnall was one, and Lawrence.
That's Dublin.
It's comparable size.
We've had folks drive from Dublin over here to work.
Yeah.
I had one at Liberty Regional did that.
Was, was a doctor?
No, a lab tech. She did weekends.
Yeah, actually, actually, one of our nine-one-one workers.
The ones that's coming from here from Hazelhurst.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they can be expanded. I'd welcome any input that you guys.
Now, I do know, gentlemen, that at one time, I'm not sure of the scale, but at one time, Fort Stewart was a competitor too for.
They are, but I'll tell you that, you know, and it's been said before, well, the states paying X or the federal government's paying X, that is generally not something that we can even get close to.
Yeah.
I know that in some of the jobs, they're paying twenty dollars an hour more in some of our job offerings.
Yeah.
And it's, we will look at them, but to try to compete with the people with the machine that makes it, it's tough.
Okay. All right, okay. All right.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
To accept this proposal.
Motion to second, we accept the proposal that's presented. EMS and fire, and we hope this will be where we need to sustain our workforce and to attract new workforce. For some time to come.
Well, hopefully.
Yes, all right. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All right, start with this present pay period, Laura said. January twenty-third, the date I heard you say. All right, good job, very thorough. Looking forward to the final one to come up.
You guys already calculated?
All right. Board appointments. Am I right, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I apologize, I didn't know the committee would be ready, I know y'all were going to meet, but I apologize.
Please don't open that door.
Just remember, whenever it's to the chairman's left, we're ready. Whenever, whenever it's to the chairman's left, you can count on us being ready.
Yeah.
I give up.
I tried, Commissioner Thrift.
We've been ready since midnight, New Year's, New Year's. January first, twenty twenty-two, at midnight.
Give up.
Mr. Chairman, just remember that if we tell you a hummingbird to pull a seven forty-seven, get in the route.
Commissioner Jones reads this. All right, gentlemen, what you got?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the committee met, and, you know, for the, the board appointments, for the Board of Assessors, and we are ready to proceed.
All right, sir.
Okay. Our first recommendation for appointment is Mr. John Hodges. The committee met, we reviewed his application, and a majority decision. We recommend that Mr. John Hodges be appointed to the Board of Tax Assessors for Liberty County.
Chair and Chair of Motion.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to place Mr. Hodges on the Tax Assessor Board.
Okay, that's second to that motion. Motion to second, we have Mr. John Hodges to accept the first position available on the Board of Assessors. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I almost hate to ask this, which position? Because, you know, you had two, and they have different expiration dates, which do you prefer?
We didn't.
I thought they were even Steven.
Yeah, we didn't have that.
No, that's the election board.
Yes, sir, they're not, I believe they're different.
Different terms, you think?
Yeah, we had one that.
One that resigned, and, yeah.
That's true, that's true.
We didn't have that information.
I'm sorry, we can go ahead and come back, sir.
Okay.
Chairman, but they they will select the chairman from within.
Mm hmm, they will. All right, let's not do the next, um, board assessment until he comes back with the terms with us. Is it, do we have other appointments besides a? That's it?
All right, well, we have to.
Two on the board of assessors.
Take a two-minute recess. Unless you're a counsel moving forward.
No, we we were ready, I just don't think Mr. Brown was ready.
Okay, okay.
One, I know we want to stay on this train, I thought with where we're at, Mr. Chairman, that what in your discussion with, um, the development prospects with, that are looking, there have been looking, or in the past have given you any comments toward what we have done here tonight as far as making these EMS and full-time fire departments? Is that as a, is it ever discussed? I know there's, they they look at the jobs, they look at the population, they look at the schools, but has that ever been even brought up?
They they always concerned about healthcare, no doubt about it, about it. And 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 the industry, industry side, they they're, that's where the fire is a big issue, because they wanna make sure that, you know, these big distribution centers, we have proper fire fire coverage, and of course, that helps them with their fire insurance too. Fire insurance, but you you listen to, it's education, you're right. It's, well, it's the, it's being a business friendly community too. That's very important to them. Uh, it's healthcare and fire protection.
Well, I.
And and they wanna know that a community gets along.
Well, we, we are.
Community where there's confusion.
And I know it don't have anything to do with, but I mean, you know, we know at Bryan County, and they would know what Poole has done with development.
Mm hmm.
And those were two on our board here that we was trying to measure against.
Mm hmm.
And that's why I was just bringing that up, of course, they.
We hold on.
Got the interstate and Poole has got the interchange, so.
Yeah, we hold on and I'm, uh, finish with this, uh, the, uh, February LCPC meeting is when, uh, developers will appear before their board to talk about
Okay.
development at Midway, I ninety-five interchange, so I'm very excited about what I anticipate hearing.
Okay.
But and we're trying, Mr. Brown, we're trying to stay ahead of that so that we can get all the help we need for DOT, for widening, you know, for the whole thing, our highway, ensuring that it's safe and trade for these, all that, we're trying to, we're trying to work all of that at the same time. It's a big job. But we're there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, what I'll, um, do, um, once we get, there there are, there are two openings where, uh, people, um, uh, fell short of completing their terms, and we we don't have the exact, um, number of years remaining, but we we would recommend Mr. Hodges for the longer term.
Okay.
O- o- out of the two, and Mr. Brown would.
We'll verify.
Mr. Brown would verify, um,
Okay.
what, um.
What that is?
Yeah, who who that he's replacing, but it would be for the the longest remaining term.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Second one?
And the second one is, uh, Mr. Lloyd Byrd. He will fill the remaining, um, term, which is the the shorter term.
Okay. Lloyd Byrd?
Yeah, B Y R D, Lloyd Byrd, Riceburg, Georgia.
And I'll make a motion that we, uh, appoint Mr. Byrd for that unexpired term to, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, he says second to a motion?
Second.
Motion to second, that we have Mr. Lloyd Byrd to accept the shorter term for the board of assessors position and further discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion fastest, Mr. Byrd, to accept the term for the shorter, position for the shorter term.
And 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 Mr. Brown, I I wanna apologize that that we, that we moved so fast that you didn't have.
Moved too fast.
Just, 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 just know, just know we've been ready since January first.
Remember Poole.
Okay.
Remember that.
Trying to get the county attorney.
Thanks, sir, I'm gonna put you on speaker.
I don't work past.
Thank you, ladies, y'all have a great evening.
I'm over overtime.
Okay, sir, are you with us?
Yes, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hey, Kelly.
Um, I don't know how much Julie has, uh, explained the possibility of, uh, public safety technology surcharge, but, you know, as you know, there's a growing reliance on technology.
In our public safety operations, from law enforcement, EMS to fire, and the technologies may necessary in large part due to offenders of our, you know, state criminal laws and traffic laws. And so we thought it was appropriate that the chairman, Julie and myself, explore the possibility of defraying some of these technology costs who are surcharged, you pay by defendants in state court. Uh, and, you know, we currently impose a court technology fee in state court civil cases, but we don't have any technology fees in state court criminal cases. And so the resolution tonight, you know, authorizes the chairman to, you know, contact the local delegation and explore that possibility of opposing the public safety technology surcharge. You know, the the revenues from which will be used, you know, exclusively for safety-related technology. Anything from body cams to emergency communications, data management, whatever top technology needs we might have in the area of public safety. And so if it meets with the approval or a local delegation or the office of legislative council, then local legislation would be passed, authorizing the surcharge. It would actually be an amendment to our current act which created the state court. And then, you know, some of you may have concerns about kind of shifting the burden of these costs to criminal defendants, many of whom are, I guess, least able to afford it. And so that's why the local legislation would authorize the state court judge to waive or reduce the surcharge if the defendant is unable to pay, whatever reason, uh, or convert it to community service, as with other fines. And so, uh, you know, the surcharge would be modest but proportionate, you know, it would, it would not exceed, in any event, ten dollars per case. But that is, that's the general proposal, uh, and of course, we have to have a discussion with the general legislature and their council to, um, you know, to confirm whether or not it's possible. But that, that's what the, that's what the resolution accomplishes tonight, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Kelly, and if this passes, it it could get introduced to this session?
Yes, sir, that that was the intent, you know, we have time, you know, we would have to publish, uh, intent of, uh, you know, to introduce local legislation and a new, local newspaper, and then wait a week, and then our local delegation could introduce, um, legislation. Of course, their their legislative council's office would have to, you know, in cooperation with us, draft the the legislation. So, but yeah, it could be accomplished, uh, this session, which I don't think it expires in until March.
And this comes from, uh, a recommendation from our state court judge?
Yeah, it's been discussed with him, and I think, you know, he could speak for himself, but he supports it. I think they've been looking for ways, um, this is, hi- his costs aren't directly related to public service, but, you know, there there are all kinds of needs for technology, uh, uh, costs. You know, they're they're currently looking, exploring ways to opt more, provide more automated service in their state court. And so the current civil case, uh, technology fee might be used to help defray some of those costs. But, you know, I think as Julie and others were looking at our budget and just seeing just the growing cost of technology, you know, much of it is, it's nice to have, but most of it is indispensable, it's necessary these days. And it's necessary because we have people who are violating, you know, traffic laws and 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 state criminal laws. And so we thought, you know, appropriately, they bear, they bear some fair share, although a very, very modest share of those costs. And so that's why we have such a relatively small per-case surcharge, and of course, grant the judge the ability to waive or or reduce that fee if they're financially liable to pay. Because I I think many of you know, there's a, there's a pretty, you know, vital policy debate ongoing now in the state and and other states about the appropriateness of, you know, raising revenue from criminal defendants, many of who come from disadvantaged populations. And and so, you know, a- aware of that, that's why we provided for these, um, kind of ability-based surcharges and very modest surcharges. You know, we're, unlike many other jurisdictions, we're not one who relies primarily on fines to raise revenue. You know, very mature, you know, ad valorem tax system, uh, as I'm sure you hear from all your constituents from town to town. So we're not one of those that a lot of these policy debates focus on. And this is just, uh, hope to be a reasonable and modest surcharge to help defray some of these, some of these growing costs.
How about the commissioner's ability to revoke this if we should find some reason that it's not working, uh, in Liberty County? Are there, we receive a lot of complaints, how how about that?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could, uh, just the same way you introduce the surcharge, you know, you could, um, introduce local legislation to revoke it. And, um, you know, unlike many other fees and surcharges and funds in Georgia, they're all mandatory. They they give no discretion to the judge, uh, at all. So, yeah, this this local legislation would. So even though, even if before the next legislative council session, you know, we would discover this was not productive, it wasn't accomplishing the goals we hoped that it would, then I'm sure we could communicate that to the judge, who could exercise his discretion to waive these fees or, you know, only impose them in in the more serious offenses. But but, but again, I I mentioned the word explore, and I think that is, that is, you know, that is the right word to use because, you know, there have been recent legislative efforts, you know, by the general assembly to basically, you know, to kind of unify and and consolidate uh, fines and and surcharges and fees in in civil and criminal cases, and to try and kind of do away with local, local fees. And so, you know, their, you know, local delegation or the general assembly or local legislative council office may recommend against these sorts of surcharges. But, you know, comparable, comparable charges, the surcharges have been imposed in civil cases. Um, and so I I don't, there's no legal impediment that I know of that would prevent it from being imposed. But it's more of a, I think, a policy concern. Uh, but we've tried to address those policy concerns as best we can, and we'll work with the local delegation, their council, to, you know, to better address them.
All right. Sounds to me like that technology is costing a pile of money that I don't know, I try not to be in a courtroom, uh, but, you know.
No, it is, I mean, if you just talk to Julie, I mean, the costs are substantial and they're growing every year.
Yeah, and and the.
I think that's why it was thought we need to at least explore the idea of trying to defray some, some of these costs. I mean, the revenue raised from this is not gonna be, it's not gonna be a necessarily a game changer, but, you know, any, any amounts help.
Well, I'd rather the fellow that's getting out of here breaking the law pay for it than it coming out of the, um,
Ad valorem.
Office or an ad valorem taxes, so, I mean.
Yeah, and, you know, we you could potentially raise much more revenue if you had a a higher surcharge, but, you know, very aware of those policies, the policy debates ongoing, you know, it was thought appropriate to cap it at least at ten dollars, and that, you know, the the ultimate fee may be less than that. That'll be a discussion that, you know, the chairman has with the local delegation and, you know, the other members of the board and, um, you know, of course, in consultation with Julie to see, you know, what exactly the, you know, the, uh, I guess, the anticipated revenue might be.
You know, I have a, say this, we'll vote, a level of comfort with who our state court judge is and how he would apply this. I'll be very frankly, I've heard from some attorneys and from some superior court judges that some counties do live on these kind of surcharges, that's what they live on. I don't wanna see that happen in Liberty County.
No, sir, I don't, I'm, I'm with you.
Yeah.
And that, that's not our situation, as as you folks know.
So I believe he's, just like the chairman said, he's a, he's an upstanding, honest product of Liberty County, and I think that
He'll apply.
He wouldn't have brought this up if there wasn't a just cause for it, and I think that, um, if we need it, if we need it, we need it, and when the time comes that we don't need it, it'll be left up to to, um, take it. Mr. Chairman, you entertain a motion?
You wanna make comment?
No, I just wanna say, Kelly, Kelly, I think what Julie was trying to say is, the state court judge didn't necessarily raise the issue, but in conversations he and I've been having about how to raise, or how to
Upset.
Fund the needed technology.
Understand.
In the, in, in the public safety court sector.
Right.
Um, there are a lot of things we're needing to do that we can't do, and this will not fund them all.
Yeah.
But it will help defray some.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you remind me of all the extended costs in juvenile court, miss.
Yeah.
You know, I think we all witness to those costs, how they just have this.
I believe we can both sit here and remember when there'd be fifteen state court cases for the whole month.
Yeah.
And it's now, the first hour, so.
Yes, it is. Chair, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we, um, adopt this, um, this technology surcharge.
Second?
Second.
Motion to second, we adopt the surcharge, technology surcharge is presented, we'll monitor it. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please, all right. This is Dr., thank you, Mr. Davis.
Yep, thank you, folks.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Brown, your report, sir?
Uh, no, sir, not really, not really a lot. Um, I did want to let you know what I'll try to do is to maintain this capital project list so you can see what's funded, what's not, kind of where those things uh, kind of stand, and also we've got a consolidated one that we'll do, uh, that includes your road, your big road projects. I did wanna mention, um, without laboring things too much, on the median improvements down there at Midway where those things are forecast to come, I've already asked Mr. Long to do some preliminary design, uh, on that section of road back towards Midway. We do have funds, uh, in the T-spash to do some median improvements in there, and, uh, he's gonna do that. We told the district highway engineer, since it's a state highway, just to let him know last week what was coming down there, which he's aware of. And, uh, so we're, we're already, we're kind of moving on that.
Well, I, I understand that we've got an engineer that is competent enough to do that, but now, if it's something that the state needs to be doing as a state rep, let's put them out there on it. I I don't see, I I see these, these charges coming up each month and, um, and I'm as picky as I can be about it, but, you know, if he's, I I understand, uh, Mr. Giller just took him off a road tonight, that and we trying to get projects completed, so, um, let's work on the ones we got, but I'm, that's Commissioner Stevens' decision. I identified it as an issue, but if the DOT is gonna be the one that makes the final decision, they need to be the one down there.
Yeah.
If they take as much time with that as they have been to curve in the Flemington.
Yeah, that, that's, that, really, really, that's the problem.
Thirty years.
They're, they're looking for the local governments to do the engineering projects that they want. They don't really staff an engineering design department anymore, and so, uh, that's the reason.
That's our part.
It would be several years before they would.
Oh, gosh.
Pick it up and.
Let's, let's, let's get it, get it done.
But but I promise you, we do get, um, if not in monetary term, we we do get accolades, brownie points for being progressive with our, with what we do. The DOT doesn't respect that. They have to push some of our projects a little bit further along.
I think that we should, and I think that we ought to ask for funding from the state to do it.
Yeah, we have.
I don't know why we gotta go in our part.
We have.
You're right.
We have to, we will, but I think we need funding from.
We we work in both sides, my friend, we're in both.
Yeah. Joey.
Yes, sir.
That was it. I I have one question, I know I had talked with you about the sidewalk cleaning project in, um, Allenhurst, and and I know Clinton has got to be as twice as busy as as I used to be, I mean, so I I I know that, you know, with manpower and 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 other jobs and stuff like that. But a- and I've always heard this, I've never really verified it, but, um, in in a city, e- e- even Hinesville, and and my guys, uh, we maintain Highway eighty-four, but but I've always heard that, um, DOT would do two two maintenance, um.
A year?
A year, in 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 any city, i- in the state, I don't know if that's true. Now, of course, Hinesville requires more than that, so that's where we come in, and we, and DOT doesn't have to come in here to cut grass at edge of sidewalk on Highway eighty-four or or in other state highway. That's my lawn to take my medicine when I'm home. But i- if, could you check with DOT and see if they could do Allenhurst?
Sure.
I mean, just twice? But if not, then, you know, a- and I know Clinton can't get to it the the day or tomorrow, but if DOT can, and just come in from right there from Hinesville to Waltherville, Hinesville has a public works department, Waltherville has one, Allenhurst doesn't, so if if wa- if DOT can come in and help us out in there with the sweeping and cleaning, covering gutters and, you know, reclaiming the sidewalks, I think that that would be good, because it it does need it, it's been, um, it's been years since, since the road department did it, and that was the last time it did it, and I go the way across from time to time, and, um, there is a DOT, either regional or district office in Jessup, right off three oh one.
Yes, sir.
And they clean Highway eighty-four like it's their front yard. And they do the same in Glenville, and there's some kind of DOT station over there too, so, um.
I'll be glad to reach out, and and.
Yeah, and just tell them. And, and, yeah, and just tell them, you know, we are not Jessup, we are not Glenville, we are Allenhurst, and we would like for them to come in once or twice a year if they can.
Okay, and, and just to let you know too, Mr. Wells and I did talk about where he was on that county-wide street sweeping, looking, he's trying to get that wrapped up for us.
Okay, good. Okay.
If they want directions, just tell them it's, where their DOT office is in Allenhurst. It's right around the corner from their office.